My glasses. I'm like a.
At least.
She's, she's along to a different asylum. She's away. Okay, I think we're ready to get started. Commissioner Gardner, can you?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great. We have Commissioner Lee and Commissioner Sakovich here present, and we can go ahead and begin. Uh, well, as we always do, we'll begin with a prayer reading or thought. And the pledge allegiance followed after, and we asked someone from the audience to provide, uh, one of the two of them. So we invite anyone here that could lead us in the prayer reading and thought. I guess we'll bring that up here. Will you do the prayer? You'll do the pledge? Yep, thank you. That's the prayer. Thank you.
Our heavenly Father, we thank thee for the opportunity to meet together today. We thank thee for the chance to discuss and to go over items of this county. We're thankful for thy watchful hand over this country and over us as a people. We pray for those that are in harm's way. They will find safety and peace, and those who are protecting that in any form or manner. We pray now that we will be able to discuss and do so in an appropriate manner in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Will you please repeat the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. From the work session items, and so we will go directly into our consent and review the regular agenda items as listed. Um, and we will consider those that we've already reviewed previously that we have no questions, that we're happy to ratify or approve. And we'll then move on to those that, and hold those that we want to have additional discussions around. So with that, we'll begin with regular agenda item one ten. Are there any that need to be held? Um, six and seven are related to each other.
I don't have any.
Commissioner Gardner, do you have any?
No, I do not.
Okay. Uh, then we'll do eleven through nineteen.
I have number eleven and number thirteen.
Number eleven and number thirteen.
I've got no additional.
And if, if it's not seen by the public, number fifteen is a removal of November sixteenth for a meeting and setting November twenty second as a commission meeting. Okay, and then that will be it for the regular agenda on the last four. I understand we have a, um, uh, topic for perhaps twenty and twenty-three. Are there any others?
Nope.
That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
So we can strike twenty-one and twenty-two then. Okay.
Thank you.
And with that. Alice, would you, uh, give us a rehash?
I bet. I have us holding agenda items number eleven and thirteen. And then as far as closed meetings, we'll hold as stated twenty and twenty-three, but striking twenty-one and twenty-two.
Okay. I have, well. Hey. With that. Well, you go into number eleven, approved property tax actions included in the recommendation letter attached to it.
So the ones that I'd like to discuss, um. Are the, uh, Brent and Carolyn Barber. The Red Brick Apartments. The Pharmatech. Endo. The, the Sound Estates. Uh, I did not, the, the document on the Utah Division of Parks was a duplicate of the Pharma, Pharma. Um, it wasn't, didn't have its own. Um. Listing. So when I, when I click on that, it pulls up the Pharmatech application. And then the Greg Gordon. So maybe starting with the first one, which is the Brent and Carolyn Barber. Uh, they're claiming that their address was fraudulently changed to a Nevada, um, address. And so my, my question is along the lines of, do we know, is there a record of changes of address? And who makes those record changes?
Yeah, hey, yes, Carrie, I'm calling from the treasurer's office. So this is an online request. And there is, uh, anytime that an address gets changed, there's an entry in the serial history for each property. Uh, they, um, had somebody in the office, uh.
Let's see if I clarify. So the, so the change was an online request?
Mm-hmm. So you can go out to the county's website. One of the features there is to do an online address change. All that's doing is updating the address for valuation and, and tax notice mailings. Or I guess any other mailings from the county. But it appears that, uh, the individual who requested that, serial number may have entered the wrong serial number. So the serial number I think that we're talking about is fifty-four, three fifty-five, zero, 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 one. What they originally had entered was fifty-four. Um, well, that's what they entered was the three fifty-five. What they meant to change, it appears, is the three thirty-five.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So it's, I mean, fraudulent's a harsh word. That's what they used in the application, but it could have just been, somebody did a mistake online.
Right.
When they were entering.
And, and so what has happened since is, uh, there is a property history entry for the Barber's changed the mailing address to the right address. Uh, the three thirty-five has been updated as well. And so you can see how maybe somebody fat fingered a three and a five.
I do it all the time.
Didn't do it right. So, uh, yeah, was, was there any fraud really involved? No, I think it was an error.
Okay, just kind of an error on. Is there, so it kind of brings up a bigger question then. What do we have? And, I mean, could somebody just go on there and start causing havoc and changing people's addresses all over the county?
I would hope not. The one thing that I think that we do in our office is, is that we try to verify Bill Lee is changing an address from
Yeah, that's the whole.
Las Vegas to Pleasant, you know, to Orem or wherever. That's the, I guess, the one check, but, yeah, you know, you can go online and, and enter that request. Uh, there's a program in the system that our office accesses every day and updates addresses. But I think that that's the one thing they try to do is verify, hey, the name looks right on this. And, and if it's already at a Las Vegas address, and now we're just updating the Las Vegas address, that's, should have what has had happened, actually. Um, the individual there who updated that particular one was, was a temporary employee that we possibly gave that address sheet to. He did exactly what, what was requested of him, other than maybe not verifying Barber versus the three fifty-five, three thirty-five name. And so he did everything that he was asked to do, entered wrong originally. But, yeah, we tried to verify some, get some, you know, uh, verification that, yeah, that, that, that I'm updating my address, that the name's the same, and it's kind of going back and forth. We can also look at the abstract. Maybe there was an ad, maybe there was a deed. Maybe there was, you know, ownership change, something along those lines that could help verify, and this looks like, this looks like it's right.
Okay, so, so with that, commissioners, I would, I would recommend on this one, um, uh, that we, that we approve on this one.
Approve me. Go ahead and approve the denial of the request.
That we, that we, that we abate.
Okay, so we, so not go with the denial of the request, just go ahead and abate
Right.
the entire thing, the taxes and the penalties or the fees.
Just the, uh, just the penalties and interest.
Just, okay, so we want to go ahead and abate the penalties and interest.
Right, which I think is about four hundred dollars for something.
Yeah, it, it is. I think it's four thirty-six, forty-nine. It's, it's, uh, I believe that they put the date there at five-two. They ended up paying on five-three, so that's why there's a slight change. So, yeah, we just give them back the penalty and interest.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, that's what. Okay. Okay, the next one that I'd like to look at is, uh, the Red Brick Apartments. So this one was estimated. Let me just get to it really quick. Um. Make sure I'm looking at the right one. Oh, oh, yes, okay. So this is the, this is the one where they bought it in July. And from my understanding in looking at this, um, it, it, it almost appears, correct me if I'm wrong with it, but it appears like we're asking them to pay the whole tax, um, on this piece of property, even though they bought it in Ju- in July of twenty-twenty-one. And I'm just wondering why we don't prorate the tax to the new owner.
Okay. Paula Stetzer with the assessor's office. Uh, this is in regards to personal property, and we don't prorate taxes when there's a sale. If there are taxes owed, it's between buyer and seller. The county doesn't get involved. So as far as, from what I can see, um, taxes follow the equipment that is being used in that location.
Okay, so I was mistaken then thinking this is real property. So this is personal property?
It is correct.
Okay. Um. All right. And do we know what that, and they just, they just didn't file? Are they above the threshold then or below? We just, we probably don't know.
We don't know because the new owners didn't bother to file either. So, again, estimations stay on those previous years along with the taxes till
Okay.
someone picks them up.
Thank you for clarifying that. I wonder, so, so we don't, they never filed in twenty-twenty-two
Correct.
then for their personal property? So we have no reference?
No.
And the previous owners didn't file the year before?
Several years before.
Oh, several years before they did?
Mm-hmm. I think it's like four years.
So we have no reference as to what that personal property value is?
Correct.
That's why we're estimating. Okay. I'd recommend that we just leave that the way it is then, since we have no reference point. Um. Pharmatech. This one. Uh, it looks like they have some documentation of mail being stolen. Police report and so forth of that. Is that correct?
Okay, our office was aware of that. Um, and we were never provided a copy of the information on the appeal that I'm aware of.
Oh.
Most appeals come across my desk, and I never seen anything, um, in regards to that. But to our knowledge, all mail was delivered. So unless it's returned to our office.
You know, what's interesting about that particular one, it's the last half of the explanation, it says that prior year's affidays have been timely filed and that payments have been timely paid. So that's why there's a, uh, the change here is due to mail theft and unexpected departure of an accounting clerk. Um, I'm not familiar with that company, so I don't have appreciation to whether the one person that left was big enough to cause them to miss this or not. That's the only thing I don't have an answer for.
And again, what changes take place within an entity, um, our office is aware of. So whether they have a turnover rate or the mail doesn't get delivered, it's not known to our office unless someone calls and contacts us within a timely manner.
So I wasn't so much concerned about that as I was that there was a police report of their mail being stolen. And I'm just wondering if, uh, if maybe we could continue this one for you to look at that and just see if that would be all right to do.
Okay.
At least verify it. That's, they have, I'm sure they have a report. If they have a report, they should be able to send that to you or something of that nature.
We can do that.
Commissioners are okay with doing that?
Yes, I'm fine with that. Commissioner Gardner?
Okay, the next one is uh, Endo C LLC. Let me get it open so I can refresh my memory on it. Um. Oh, this is personal property again.
Mm-hmm.
And, and this one has to do with um, that they didn't file, so they were estimated. We do have a record of what they had the year before, which I know you don't necessarily go off of that, and we have, I think, this year's as well. So we're looking at the in-between. And so for me, in, in looking at the in-between, meaning that they, what they had the year before, which again, you didn't have, you know that, but you can't go off of that. And now what we do have, which is this, this year's, um, it seems obvious to me that they're probably, uh, that they're under that threshold in, in that year in between in which they didn't file. And so, uh, um, I'm, I'm inclined to, um, eliminate that one just off of what we know from prior and post on what they have for personal property.
Sometimes businesses will, and this, don't take this in the wrong way. They will kind of maneuver things to fit within the exemption, not saying that this is the case. But, um, I mean, that's fine. But again, having no knowledge of, you know, what they actually had and when it was acquired would determine as well what their assessed value would be for those years.
Yeah, that's true. That could, could happen, but I think their numbers, I'm trying to find their numbers from the year previous to the near, the year.
That is fine.
Um. Seems like they're pretty low.
Yeah, because the previous year was, was under the exemption limit.
And, and, and the exemption limit, I, I was, that name, that number changes all the time. Is it fifteen? Or is it now higher than that? Is it twenty now? I don't even know.
This year's twenty-five. Last year, yeah, last year was fifteen-eight. The year before was fifteen-three.
And they're claiming that they had, what was their? How much personal property? I thought it was like a thousand dollars or so. Seems quite significantly lower than even close to the, trying to fudge it around at the top end. So commissioners, I would suggest that we, that we, um, abate that one. It's my recommendation.
Abate it or approve the request?
Or approve the request, yeah.
Okay. I'm fine.
I'm fine with that.
And then on the Sound Estates. Um, this was an interesting one for me, uh, and I'll tell you where I kind of really landed on this one. In, in reading down through it, um, it's, it's interesting that the address on here is so close, but it's not quite, you know? And, and so I went back to the document because it says that, that the notice was mailed to the address provided on the document, and then I, so I went to the document itself. Um. And the, the document. I can get to the document. Um, it says, uh, tax ID, and it gives the tax ID number, also known by street number as three twenty-three and three twenty-nine North State Street in Orem. Then Orem, Utah, eight four zero five seven. That's, that's what it says on the specialty warranty deed. And when I went to the notice that was sent. Can I get there? The notice says it was sent to three twenty-three North State Street, Orem. Um. What it didn't have on there is exactly what it had on the specialty deed, because the specialty deed had three twenty-three and three twenty-nine. And they're claiming that three twenty-nine is the address. And so they changed it to just three twenty-nine and something else, I think, three twenty-seven or whatever. So there was, but, but, uh, the, the claim is, is that we sent the notification to the address listed on the specialty warranty, special warranty deed. And actually, we didn't because it doesn't have the three twenty-nine on there. And so I would, I would recommend, um, that we approve this one as well with, uh, uh, this is just, uh, um, just the, the penalties and interests.
So abate penalties and interest on
Yeah.
this one.
So. Carrie, I'm calling from the treasurer's office. So the total's going to be a little bit different. They have eighteen thirty, one thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. If you look what they actually paid, um, they made a payment on, um, May twenty-third of two thousand twenty-two that paid all of twenty-one's and, and most of twenty-twenty's. And so, uh, what I would like to propose is, but, you know, give them back their penalty and interest from the twenty-one tax and readjust the penalties and interest paid in the year of twenty-twenty because it pays penalties, interest, and remaining amount goes to pay tax. So if I can push some money back
Okay.
from P and I, penalty and interest over to pay the tax off, the refund would be three hundred from PNI, penalty and interest over to pay the tax off, the refund would be three hundred and sixty-four dollars and four cents. If that's all right. I don't know if you guys keep track of the dollar amounts.
Sounds reasonable.
But I would rather say, hey, if I got money in hand, let's clean up the tax amount
Yeah.
from the PNI and then give them back the remaining amount.
So you say it's three-twenty-nine for twenty-twenty? Did I hear that correctly?
Um, the total amount was three hundred and sixty-four dollars and four cents.
Three hundred and sixty-four dollars, okay, for twenty-twenty.
So there's no point in refunding and then asking them back and getting hit with penalty and interest later on in unpaid tax?
No, that, I'm good with that, so.
I'd rather have the money in hand.
As long as we, I don't know how we put this all into a motion, but as discussed, I guess, unless Adam wants to, you know, just kind of recap everything.
Yeah, I think that, that sounds great.
Basically, basically approve their request less the three hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty cents, I think you said, for twenty-twenty taxes?
That would be gone then.
That works? Okay.
Okay. That's just part of our conversation, as long as that's okay with the other commissioner or with all commissioners.
I'm good with that. Commissioner Gardner?
Yep, I am.
And then on the Utah Division of Parks and Recreation, I, I, I realize that we're not talking about another governmental entity, but I suggest that we continue that one until we have all the documentation so that we can look down through it. It just, somehow there was a copy and paste that gave the other one when I was clicking on it.
Yes, that, that's exactly what happened. Commissioner Adam Beck, Utah County Attorney's Office, and we can make sure that at, at the next recommendation letter, we can get you that information.
Perfect.
With plenty of time to review.
It's one of my initial reads. It sounded similar to what we've had in the past where someone buys property in which the property had some existing, um, taxes, penalties, whatever owed. That's, is supposed to be owned by the new owner. So this is, what threw me off is that they're asking that we re, abate this. Well, we normally don't do that.
Yeah, the, the, the thing that's different here is, is who the new owner is, and, and so we can, we can discuss that
Okay.
uh, when, when we are able to provide you with all the material.
Which does bring up a whole nother discussion about taxes, paying taxes, or about who's paying, what's, whose taxes are paying whose portion of the tax. I mean, we can have that discussion in the future with it, but. Okay. And then the last one I have on here is, uh, Greg Gordon. Let me get to this one, see what, refresh my memory on it again.
Yeah, that's, um, the third page, second one down.
Yeah.
Number ninety-four, eight-one-nine. Property ID.
This, this is a personal property one, uh, again, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So excuse me, I, so I'm trying to get back to where I, I marked it, and I'm trying to remember what my question. Was, was this one estimated as well?
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding that it was estimated. They, they didn't realize that they had to apply for those, those previous years. When they did apply, then, um, it was, it was below the, below the exemption.
Right. And did he actually apply for the exemptions separately since?
I believe that they have applied since.
So my, my question, like, now that I'm seeing it, is, um, again, it looks, it looks like they're around seven thousand dollars and not even close to twenty-five. And if we have historical information that has, that, that's detailing that they're roughly in that area. Just like we did on that, the one previous, um, I would, I would be inclined, commissioners, to, um, to remove this one from the, since they're, I, I hate to tax somebody when they truly don't own it, but it, we're in a speculation period where we don't know that they, that's why it's estimated. That's exactly what you're supposed to do. Uh, but I think the before and after are showing that they're significantly below that on pro, personal property tax. You know, they submitted online about seven thousand twenty-six dollars, so that's way, well below the twenty-five thousand dollar threshold. And so I would, I would wish that we could grant them that exemption.
Otherwise, if there's, if we suspect.
Yeah, I agree.
If this, if we suspect it's a lot larger, then maybe we should continue to verify them. Otherwise, if we think it's about where he says it is, I think we should grant the request.
Okay. And those, those are the ones that I have questions on.
You covered the ones I was going to ask about too, so.
Okay, good.
Um, I had questions on the Peter and Natasha Jordan Family Trust on that green belt rollback. Now, if we have more information on that, I think their, their claim is that the piece we're rolling back is the piece that holds all of their, um, equipment and all of their seeds and fertilizer and supplies for their farm. But didn't know if we had more information on that one.
Yeah, that was, um, that was the, um, the fourth from the top on the first group. And, uh, the owner's claiming that the property isn't contiguous. And so it needed more time to draw up the information to verify that.
If we can't get more information on that one, I'd be fine continuing it.
Okay.
I would like to know more information on rollback, you know, they're contesting it because they utilize that property as part of their farming operation. But I would, but I would like to know more about it and know, are they meeting the AUM? Questions like that.
So let's continue that item. That's the one for sixteen thousand dollar requested. For more information on that.
I'll, I'll just tell you my thinking in that one. I, I know that in Board of Equalization, we usually vet those all the way through, and so when I saw it come up based on production, I was, I was a little confused, Commissioner, that, uh, one, if there was still an appeal, why the appeal process didn't happen, or they requested go to the thirteen forty-seven or the green folder, uh, application instead of, and when I saw it on here, I, I was, I was just confused by why they'd go this route when we already probably went through it in Board of Equalization, um, sufficient. So that's the reason why I never thought to bring it up, but since we probably already denied them on that side.
Yeah, and I had the same question, so I thought maybe we can just continue it until we can get those questions answered.
Okay.
Okay. We'll continue that one.
I don't even know if, I don't know if their appeal, do they, how long does that last after they've been denied from uh, on, for Board, Board of Equalization?
To the state?
To the state and then maybe even to bring it on to our thirteen forty-seven for commission?
I know for the state, it's thirty days after the decision is rendered that they can appeal to the state, so they're well past that deadline. I don't know what your thirteen forty-seven.
So I don't know if they would, I guess they could appeal it to the state.
Or the thirteen forty-seven, they could bring it here.
Anytime?
At any time, yeah.
So I'm wondering if this, if what they're trying to do here is a little, well, I don't think they're trying to do it. We're trying to, we're trying to, uh, well, no, they actually put an application in, so it seems out of process to me.
If we vote on it now, does that take away their ability to do an appeal somewhere else?
Excuse me, Commissioner, an appeal to like the state tax commission?
Yeah, and they're past the thirty days there, right?
They would be past their deadline for that.
I, I think you're right.
I didn't remember it from the BOE, and, yeah, okay. Thank you.
And then maybe they can, we can talk to them about, say, are you really want to go this route instead of going, you know, a different route? But anyway. Okay, you ready for a motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we approve the tax actions, uh, in, in the, uh, the recommend, the recommendations that we have before us with, with the adjustments that we have made during the meeting.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 That passes three-zero. And now we're on to agenda item number thirteen. Approve and authorize commission to sign a memorandum of understanding with Dr. Valentine to research Children's Justice Center's data collection.
Hello?
Hi, Rebecca Martel, Children's Justice Center.
Yes. Um, in, in reading through this, my, my concerns are more along the lines of, uh, I know that we, that, that, you know, we're keeping the information private, and, and so, uh, as I'm looking at this, uh, this MOU, I, I guess first question is, is, uh, since, especially since we're talking about children's, um, data. I'm sensitive as you are with that. I know you are.
Right.
And so, um, when, do the, do the children or do the parents, do they even know that this is, uh, that somebody else is going to be looking at it besides those in your office who, I'm sure they agree to that?
Um, so, no. Um, in the medical field though, if you look at the MOU, there has been an IRB approval through BYU. And so it is a committee of human rights, making sure that no rights are going to be violated and that the information that's going to go out is going to be, um, as she puts in here, de-identified. So the research data that will come out of this will not, um, include any personal information about the kids.
Right. So as I, and I, so as I read down through it, a couple of things jumped out to me. It says a password-protected word document of patients' names, comma, law enforcement agency, comma, law enforcement agency case numbers and, and date of assault will be created solely for the purpose of, of tracking DNA. Anytime I see a DNA, I, I, it makes me just a little bit hesitant because DNA is very specific. Um, it's not just in general. And so if we're having, if we're, you know, analysis, finding and submitting sexual assault kits. And then later on, it says, once Utah Bureau of Forensic Service number is obtained, the list of names will be destroyed, will be destroyed. Are we just talking about the patients' names?
Mm-hmm.
Well, what about the law enforcement agency, the law enforcement agency case numbers?
Right, the whole log that they're creating to get that identifier number. Then, once they have the number, they will delete the whole log of information.
Okay.
The whole lot number, meaning?
The whole log that he had listed of all the information they're going to be keeping. And it might be useful for you guys to understand why we're doing this, what the purpose of this is. So right now, there hasn't really been, there hasn't been any research as far as how long we can go out and collect DNA evidence um, on kids. So like the timeframe right now is three days. What we're hoping to find through this research is can we expand that out to five days? So we've been collecting for five days, and now they're going to go back and look and see, is there still DNA evidence that can be found? Which would be really exciting, and we've been working with, um, national organizations for forensic sane nurses. And everyone's really excited to see like what the results are going to be that come out of this research.
So.
So we can hold perpetrators accountable.
Right, and I, I'm fully on board with you on that. Uh, the question is, is with this, with this DNA analysis, I mean, I noticed that it, I mean, it doesn't say, maybe it, maybe I'm not reading it that way, but it doesn't say that the, the DNA records will be um, scrubbed or eliminated.
So those are all in the crime lab database anyway.
Yeah.
So this is all, these are all cases where there was a crime that was committed, they collected DNA evidence, they sent it up to the crime labs. Those results will, you know, go to law enforcement, law enforcement then gives that over to prosecution. Um, so.
And now we have a third party who has them.
Right, and, and Julie Valentine has done this before, like with adult cases. She has done a lot of research on adult um, sexual assault cases and, you know, DNA with those cases. So she has a great relationship with the crime labs. You know, like I said, and then everything is being overseen to make sure that no rights are being violated.
Well, I think part of what's important here to recognize is that they're not trying to get the DNA of the victim, they're getting the DNA, they're looking for the DNA of the prosecutor.
Right, but I'm sure they get both.
I'm also wondering, um, if the, what the, if there's like an academic review board that looks at this, is there a standard board that's looking at this?
Yeah, that's the IRB board with BYU.
Okay.
So, and as far as.
And they reviewed, they reviewed that, that contract and.
They've already reviewed it and approved this project, yes. Um, so, just so I can understand, so the concern with the DNA is like that we.
Who's DNA? Who's DNA is being, being kept?
So when they, when they look at the crime lab, when they look at these day, DNA samples, they also will take a sample from the child to compare it, right? So we're not, we're not involving DNA samples that are of the child's. So these are other DNA that has shown up in areas that shouldn't be showing up on kids.
Yeah, right.
Mm-hmm.
And so, um, on the, on the DNA though, um, since they're looking at the, since they're looking at the form or the, the kit, um, they're going to have both.
They're going to have the child's name.
The child's and.
Mm-hmm. And whatever.
And who, whatever else is on there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I absolutely, of course, you know, it, it's very important to us that, you know, children's identities be kept confidential and, and private. Um, and so, you know, this, again,
Yeah.
that information is not going to be released to anyone, and they are going to keep it secured.
So ultimately, once it's logged.
While they have it.
What they, is the basic information of age, gender, um, maybe race of the child that's been affected. But the specific individual, information on an individual is not, is not kept, it's also destroyed.
Right.
So it's just the generic information that they're logging to, to track to see the efficacy of the length of.
Yeah, that, well, they have to be able to find those cases in the crime lab. So that's why they need our information. Because we don't actually even get those results back at all from the crime lab. They go directly to the investigators on the case.
Yeah. Well, um, is there, is there a big hurry with this, or could it wait one week until our next commission meeting so I could have some follow-up discussion?
We can, we can wait a week, that's fine.
Okay, I, I'd like to talk with the doctor too, and maybe, and yourself.
With Dr. Valentine?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that sounds great. I can get that set up.
That'd be fine, yes. That'd be doable.
And then maybe if I could talk with their, uh, that, that one with the names seems like it's just name, maybe, maybe we could expand that.
Hmm, okay.
So that it's, it's actually, anyway. The next commission, yeah, that'd be the next commission meeting.
Fourteenth of September.
That work?
Yeah, that's.
Okay. I'll make a motion then that we continue item number thirteen to the next commission meeting.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion. But in a correction, I think that'll be true, because the next commission meeting is not be two weeks.
Right.
Right, September fourteenth. All in favor, say aye.
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 That passes three-zero.
Rebecca, would you, would you get with, with Rachel and just schedule that? Okay, great.
And I think that concludes any regular agenda items. Did I miss anything? Okay, that will do it. Um, any public comment? Any online, Alice? Then we're adjourned at this session then. Thank you, everyone.